...of July ninth, two thousand thirteen, as submitted.
So moved.
We have a motion on the table?
Second.
Mister Chairman, can you make that contingent on us doing a final review over it? Because this would be the Fernway Estates issue.
Would that be under further com- further discussion?
Yes.
All right, we will amend the motion, the Chair will entertain amending the motion to...
I recommend amending the motion.
As stated, we have a motion on, amended motion on the table? Oh, actually, yeah, we have an amended motion.
So moved?
No, we already have a so moved.
So then, second.
You would second it, thank you. All those in favor of the amended motion, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstained, and that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is pay- payment of bills. First invoice is from... GPI, this is for Donna Estates. Invoice number zero one seven five zero zero four, in the amount of one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Next invoice is from Niche Engineering, invoice four one nine four zero. This is for Oak Point, in the amount of five thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. Next invoice is from Niche Engineering, invoice number four one six one zero, for Oak Point, in the amount of three thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents. And that is it.
So moved?
What are we moving?
I motioned that we... I motioned that we accept, or we pay the bills as red.
Motion on the table?
Second.
And a second, open for further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstained, and that motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is approval of Form As. Do they have them?
No.
Ah, so we beat the clock.
We, we actually have item two on the other, that is a letter we were gonna send to the Board of Selectmen. You might wanna vote that.
Okay.
While they're here, they can hear the discussion.
That would be the request, uh, request Board of Selectmen authorization for surety expenditures of Tanglewood Estates. Is there a document in there?
There is a document in there.
The end of your supplemental.
I'm sorry, that was...
At the back of your supplemental?
Oh, okay.
For your signature.
Is it? He did say the back, right?
Yes.
Is this the original, or is the original in here?
The original should be in the, uh...
Blue. Um, okay, uh, do you wanna, Mister Flynn, you wanna present this letter?
Yes, uh, Tanglewood Estates, Street Trees. Uh, the contractor, as you know, was responsible for replacing and maintaining thirty-five street trees on Saddleworth Way, Chelton Way, and Pendleton Court. However, he has, uh, not performed, and we called in the letter of credit last week for twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we now have to go to the next step and request release or expenditures from the, for the Board of Selectmen to, uh, allow us to spend the surety. And essentially, this letter is requesting that to occur.
Good. Any questions from the Board members, comments? Um, hearing none, the Chair will entertain a motion for approval to sign off on a letter to the Board of Selectmen for Tanglewood Estates' street trees, approval of surety expenditure to replace and maintain thirty-five trees in the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Mister Chairman, it might be worth explaining to the Selectmen that when we call in surety, which is developers' money that's been posted to ensure completion, and this particular surety, um, has been posted since two thousand four, and the trees that need to be replaced have been dead since two thousand eight, two thousand nine, so the Board called this in. It's, uh, it's the same type of surety that's on the current town meeting warrant, it's just that the subdivision control law, the state law that enables us to regulate subdivisions, allows you to appropriate the expenditure of the money if it's up to a hundred thousand dollars, and if it's over a hundred thousand dollars, town meeting must appropriate the money. So this is similar money to the Fernway money that's on the town meeting warrant, it's just that it's well under a hundred thousand dollars. Twenty-one thousand two fifty.
Okay, we've inter- I haven't entertained a motion out there.
You have a motion, you don't have a motion?
I don't, I want somebody to move it.
I move that we submit the letter to the Board of Selectmen for the allocation of, to authorize the allocation of the money to replace the street trees.
Okay, we have a motion on the table?
Second.
And a second, open for further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstained, that motion carries. You'll be getting this in the mail.
We patiently...
All right, we've still got a couple minutes. Anything, any other quick ones on here?
No, the, the other two are more lengthy comments to the zoning board on projects pending before them, and then the other one is the awarding of the contract for Fernway.
Are we ready to talk about that one yet?
We could begin to talk, how much time do we have?
We don't have enough time. So we'll come back to it. In the meantime, the Board members would, uh, take out their information on, uh, the zoning bylaw change that is pending.
I knew you would ask that, I was...
I have a copy here from Mike's.
It's actually, hold on a minute. I didn't make, it's the one thing I didn't do, so hold on a minute.
This is the one? Is that there, or...
It's actually the bylaw itself, this is the article from the Board of Selectmen. That's the actual article. So you can, you can keep that.
What's this?
That's, this was facts and stuff that the Board of Health, Health Department, the, the stuff you've been at Jean's workshop. And then I had a memo to the Board. Actually, is, is, we could steal Mike Solomon's, I need the packet. I'll give you his address.
Suppose you wanted to go outside of the general, is that possible, or is that...
I think we gotta do this to a public, we gotta wait.
No, I'm just asking. If you have a firm, a zone bylaw...
It would be a variance.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is a hearing, um, and we are opening this hearing for the zoning bylaw change, regulation of locations of registered marijuana dispensaries. And we do have a, um, this was posted in the paper, right? Uh, as introduction, the Middleborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, at seven forty-five P.M. in the Selectmen's Room, Town Hall, Middleborough, relative to a petition sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, to amend the zoning, I'm sorry, to amend the town zoning bylaws for the purpose of regulating the locations of registered marijuana dispensaries, by amending section three point one, principal uses, by adding a new use to the table of uses in subsection D, commercial uses, so that the new use, registered marijuana dispensary, is permitted in the general use, GU district, by selecting, uh, by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, but not otherwise, and is prohibited in all of the other districts. Copies of the described changes are available to be inspected in the Town Clerk's Office and the Planning Department. Anyone desiring to be heard on these subjects should appear at the time and place designated. Middleborough Planning Board. So that was, um, in the paper, right? Uh, who wants to start? Yes, Mister McKinnon?
Good evening, Steve McKinnon, Middleborough Board of Selectmen Chairman, resident of Middleborough, eight six seven Plymouth Street, Middleborough, Mass. Thank you for entertaining this motion. The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously, unanimously to support Article twenty-two, which, uh, do you want me to read Article twenty-two for the record?
Yes.
Okay. Article twenty-two for the special town meeting is to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws for the purpose of regulating the locations of registered marijuana dispensaries by adding a new use to the table of uses in section three point one, subsection D, commercial uses, so that the new use is permitted in the general use, GU, district, by special permit from the Board of Appeals, but not otherwise, and that the law, the bylaw reads as follows, and the chart would be, uh, table of uses, principal use, uh, subsection D, commercial uses, number thirty-four would be added, uh, registered marijuana dispensary, and we'd have, uh, under the, all, all of the districts would be N except for GU, which is a ZBA, would be noted as ZBA, or act anything thereon. As, uh, I'm also here to request that you entertain a modification to this. The Board voted to add, the Board of Selectmen voted last night to add in the GU X district, which as you know, goes from Route four ninety-five on Route twenty-eight south to the Rochester Line. This would enable a larger area of, uh, business, uh, for, for the purpose of putting a, uh, medical marijuana facility. This was neglected to be done, would have been done had they had the zoning map out when they were doing the original, uh, motion, uh, they didn't have the maps, and they didn't see that they left off a piece of, rather, a large piece of the town. So we would, uh, the Board has voted unanimously to amend this to add GU X to the, uh, bylaw.
And you, did you state that that was Article, gonna be Article twenty-two?
Article twenty-two, yes, of the special town meeting.
Okay, open for, let's start with the, any, anything from the Planning Department?
No, I had worked with the Board of Selectmen to, um, assist them in, um, looking at the GU S X district, because they both allow retail uses, and it extends into the South Middleborough area, which, you know, appears to be adequate for this use. This does, uh, restrict use in the downtown business district, and I think that's something that, you know, between the schools, the churches and whatnot, it wouldn't be an appropriate district anyway, but it allows it in the GU, in the GU X districts if we so move that. Uh, I spoke with town council, as I reported to the Board, um, on amending this mo- the article that's on the town meeting warrant, and he felt the best way to amend it was through the Planning Board recommending after public hearing that it be amended. So that's, I've written two reports for you to consider, you know, these are draft reports, we gotta put them on letterhead still, but one is just for the GU, and the second is for the amendment, and we would structure that with the Board of Selectmen on who amends. I think they could do an amendment with our recommendation, and since we have to recommend under state law, um, town council feels that's the appropriate method.
Okay. So we'll figure out the mechanics of that before...
So basically, it's all kind of the areas surrounding Route twenty-eight?
GU is the Route twenty-eight area north of the four ninety-five interchange at Rock Village.
Okay.
GU X is the area on Route twenty-eight south of that, and then there are miscellaneous small pockets of GU in other locations.
I'm sorry, was there a question on that?
She asked which areas would be prohibited?
Oh. Everything else.
Everything else?
Our GU's district is a thirteen-mile stretch along Route twenty-eight, it's a considerable, considerably large zoning district, GU and GU X combined.
Um, any other questions from the Planning Board members? Any public comment, any further public comment? Yes?
I have a second question.
Can you just state your name and address, or at least, um...
Sure, my name's Patricia Gilmore, I live at eighteen Webster Street in Middleborough.
Yes.
Uh, wondering why this is being brought up now, and we're proposing to have an amendment at the town meeting, and this was already discussed at the Board of Selectmen meeting, which I didn't see anybody here at.
Anybody wanna pick them?
Um, under state law, to make a zoning change, the Planning Board must hold a public hearing on the zoning change and make a report to town meeting. This is the process to get this zoning change to town meeting. I have been at Board of Selectmen meetings and have met with the Board, um, to discuss this, as representing the Planning Board.
The Board of Selectmen meeting that happened on Route twenty-eight, that I didn't see anybody at? The Board of Selectmen wanted to keep its own general use retail and not to prohibit it where it could be, so why could, why do you wanna change that now?
No, general use is the district, that's the district they're recommending that it be allowed in, and that's what we are having the hearing on, on to allow it in the GU district. They're also recommending to add the GU X district, so it's now in two very large retail districts, and we're contemplating recommending that amendment. So we're not going against the Board of Selectmen, we're working with them...
So that's the amendment that you want to recommend on the second meeting on the seventh?
Is to add, to include not only the GU district, but the GU X district also.
And that's the only amendment that you want proposed on the seventh meeting?
Yes.
So, as I understand the zoning and the way that most zoning is written, it's where it's stated, and everything not stated is not allowed. So if it says to be allowed in the GU district, that would be the only, and then potentially amended to add the GU S X district, those would be the only two areas that it would be allowed in town.
Also, the chart, which the Board has on one of their pages, but they're looking at the printed text version, the chart in all the other districts says no, 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 Residence A, Residence B, Residence Rural, Business, those all say no. So the only two that allow it, they say ZBA, that means the ZBA is the Special Permit Granting Authority.
Uh, still open for public comment? Any further public comment? Quiet? Um, and I'll just go back to the Board members one more time before we, uh... Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve registered marijuana dispensaries for the general use district and the general use X district, which will be amended at town meeting, but we're gonna recommend approval on that, um... As a zoning bylaw change.
Mister Chairman, you actually have the wording, you have, um, prepared two alternative reports, the second one...
You wanna just read the whole report?
Yeah, I think at least the, um...
Okay.
Yeah.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve what will be Article twenty-two on the special town meeting, which will be held on Oc- October seventh. Um, this is the report from the Planning Board on September twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, uh, the Middleborough Planning Board will approve to recommend favorable action on Article twenty-two, and to recommend amendment of said article as follows. Amend the zoning bylaw by adding a new use to the table of uses in section three point one, principal uses, subsection D, registered marijuana dispensaries is permitted in both the general use and the general use X districts by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, but not otherwise, and is prohibited in all other districts. That is the mo- the entertained motion.
So moved.
Uh, we have a motion on the table?
Second.
And we have a second, open for further discussion?
Mister Chairman, in reading the, um, original article, after subsection D, it should say commercial uses, dash, commercial uses, I took this from a version that didn't have it.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
It's gonna say three point one, principal uses, subsection D, dash, commercial uses, comma, registered marijuana dispensary.
Okay.
When this goes to the Attorney General, we don't wanna error.
Okay, so we'll amend the motion as stated. Still open for further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstained, and that motion carries. Thank you. Do you have an original in here?
I've gotta put this on letterhead still. So it's just your signature that you can come by.
Okay.
Or we could do it in the meeting of the first.
Okay. Very good. You're all welcome to stay, of course. Um, and we got a couple minutes before the, uh, oh, do we, should I close that, that hearing first? So why don't we do, why don't we start that over?
Let's close it.
The Chair, the Chair will entertain a motion to close the hearing for, for zoning bylaw changes.
Second.
We have a motion on the table and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstained, that motion carries. Too much pressure tonight.
With an audience?
Very good. Still got at least one minute left.
How did you remind me?
Oh, you did. It was too late, though. Okay, next item on the agenda is a hearing for Campanelli Business Park, uh, this is by Christmas Tree Shop, application for fourth master special permit for accessory retail use, and Lot Nine and parcel A special permit for accessory retail parking, I should say, retail, parking, and et cetera. Uh, this is the, the owner is Christmas Tree Shops, this was continued from August twentieth, two thousand thirteen, and expires on November twentieth, two thousand and thirteen. I think, are we hearing anyone on this side?
Um, we do have requests from Christmas Tree to continue the hearing until October eighth, uh, they got me the, um, changes to the permit late last week, and I have not had the chance to review them yet.
That was the draft that you put in?
That's the draft that you received in the packet. Um, the snag that we have here is, it's my understanding that unless Campanelli is successful in having us remove, um, conditions thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen from the master permit, which is the traffic signal, traffic analysis and all that, that they would appeal any permit we issued of Christmas Tree. So that's something that we're gonna be working through between this, now and this next hearing, um, and hopefully we can get that resolved. I've expressed, and that, that came to me through Christmas Tree, and I've had subsequent discussions with Campanelli.
Okay.
Um, I assured Campanelli that we were actually, because there's not enough traffic information on the, what the future lots hold as far as expansion, that the cleanest way of doing this is a little different than we've started, which was, instead of permitting the entire Campanelli Park to allow accessory retail, um, just allow accessory retail on the Christmas Tree lot for now, because that's the one that we know, we have an actual project, and then limit Christmas Tree to either six o'clock on Friday to nine, to get it just past the peak, or if that still makes Campanelli nervous about triggering a signal, just limit it to Saturday and Sunday. And Christmas Tree is actually okay with either, they prefer Friday, so we're kinda working through that, but that's what I've told Campanelli that the vision for the permit would probably be.
Okay. Uh, do we intend to have a Planning Board, uh, meeting on the eighth?
I believe we already have one scheduled.
Nothing scheduled yet? It's right after town meeting.
The thing is, we're already, I've got a, the clerk only works Monday and Friday when there's a meeting, so it's going every other week, so if we start swapping meetings around, it, it messes up my staff in the office, so we could do it that next night, but it, then it doesn't align right with Thanksgiving and everything.
Well, just as a, a word of caution, should, not that we expect it to, but should the town meeting go a second night?
That's true.
That's kinda why we always avoid them.
We could do it the following week, and then we could try to adjust back onto the schedule. schedule.
8th, and then we are on on the 15th.
We are on, already on the 15th. The 8th, we weren't scheduled for.
I thought that the first, oh, point meeting was the extra meeting, but I guess not. No, we are on with Wildflower, you're right.
Should we, so we should probably go to the 15th?
The 15th.
So when does their, when does their application expire?
November 20th.
And they do want, they would really like to open this retail outlet before Christmas, so hopefully, that would give us enough time to hopefully pull this together and have a, two final permits for that night.
I'm just, I'm, I don't think it's time for comment. I'm just getting a little concerned that this has been going on for months and months and months, and we, what, what have, for a while we were, for the first, say, three months or whatnot, Campanelli wasn't necessarily even bringing up as a concern and this and that, so do we have all the issues out on the table so that we can start to get some of the answers that we need so that we can make a decision on this?
Campanelli wasn't bringing anything up because they didn't know that, even though they got four different abudders notices, they didn't know it until I called them and actually told them this was happening to make sure they, they were aware of it. So having, I mean, it would not, it would not do to really have the party who holds the permit now not be aware that these changes were being made, so that's why these new issues have come up over the summer, and I just found out about, I just found out about Campanelli's issues on, I think yesterday.
I just, I don't necessarily want to see actions that we take be detrimental to them trying to get open for a retail season.
Any other comments? Any comments from, any public comments on Christmas Tree Shop? Hearing none? Chair will entertain a motion to continue the hearing for Campanelli, Campanelli Business Park by Christmas Tree Shop to October 15th at eight o'clock PM. Okay, we have a motion on the table?
Second.
And a second. Open for further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All is opposed? Abstained? And that motion carries. I did say 15, right?
Yes.
Because I was looking at the 8th.
Think we need to close this too, though.
No, it's continuing. I only screw up, I only have one screw up in this meeting. Okay. Next item on the agenda is award contract for Fernway Estates per Planning Board approval. Mr. Fellini?
Yes.
Would you like to update the mass of crowd?
Sure. We, of course, everyone knows that we processed the bid opening on the 19th, and we had one participant, it was U.S. Pavement Services Incorporated, and we, they were the apparent winner of the bid, being the only one. That was the, the only one to choose at that time. There, on the memo that I gave you, list the, our Planning Department and GPI's original estimate of the amounts, and then U.S. Pavements' bid results on the 19th, and then the bid corrections. As you were aware, that there was some typos and errors on the original bid. There was three errors. One was minor, one was a little bit more major, and they were able to revise their bid and correct the errors. And the third column provides for the adjustments, and the total bid was $164,045. That is including the ad alternates 1 through 3. And as you can see, there was a slight difference in the amounts. I also have here a future project that we would have to acquire an engineer to do the construction layout, and roadway as-built and roadway layout plan combination for acceptance.
Did you say you had a proposal for that?
No, we would have to send out requests for...
We're working on a scope of work to get a couple of estimates.
That's where I thought you were, didn't you?
Yeah.
I thought I heard you say you had a proposal, I was like, whoa.
No. It also includes installation of bounce. So those essentially three items, what we'll need to get estimates for.
Just for the record, I know we only had one respondent. We had nobody participate in the walkthrough, but for the record, how many RFPs were picked up, do you know?
There were a total of five. There were prospective contractors. There was a total of 10, but they were for data collection, publishing companies. So overall, the Planning Department recommends that the Board award the contract to U.S. Pavement Services Incorporated. Their corrections are on the next page. It identifies the three errors and the, and the change in the amounts.
I think before we go on, just for the public's knowledge, we estimated that the project with the three ad alternatives would come out to about $170,000, and the bid has come in at, is it 165?
164. So it's about $6,700 cheaper.
So I think we did very well.
I was going to, I was going to comment, that's a heck of an estimating job.
Yeah, pretty close.
Very nice.
So on the third page, we have the, on this one here, it itemized all the line items. If you want to get into it more in depth, you can figure out the comparison between GPIs and the Planning Department's cost estimate, as well as the U.S. Pavements for each line item, so.
Is the recommendation to approve the ad alternates as well?
All of them, yes. Since they fell 67, $6,800 less than a cost estimate, original cost estimate, we can accept all three.
Can you just, maybe it's written here somewhere. Can you just remind me what the three alternates were again?
Yes.
Oh, here it is, I got it.
It's on the third page, it'll highlight. Ad alt number one was for loam and burrow, loam-burrow material and seeding. Ad alt two was street tree removal, street tree maintenance, and street tree replacement. And ad alt three is removal of drainage structure sediment and utilities repairs.
Okay.
On the fourth page, I have the proposed bid schedule. It itemizes all the things that we need to do. As you can see today, we are awarding the contract, and tomorrow we'll have to send out the notice of award.
Now, we're awarding the bid, not the actual contract, right?
Correct, we're just awarding the contract, but we're not signing it.
Yeah.
It's notice of award.
Notice of award.
It's award of the bid.
Award of the bid.
Yeah. And of course, we can't sign that until after town meeting on October 7th.
Is the next, is the next step, the next step is contractual, right?
Correct. Just going back a step, Paul, I think that the intent is, in Section 2, the very last sentence says that the town cannot enter into a contract until after town meeting.
Right.
Our intent is for you to vote the award and us to send out the notice of award with the cover letter that says, please note, Section 2, information for bid is, the town is not able to enter into a contract until such time that town meeting votes the appropriation on October 7th. So that, that's kind of what we're intending, because we want to get this moving, we want to have a pre-construction meeting, so we're going to, once you vote this tonight, and tomorrow, I think I sign the notice of award, is how it's set up. I'm going to be checking with town council, but I believe that's how it goes, that, and if, and if we can't, if I can't sign it, we'll still award it.
Yeah.
And have, and, but I'm sure town council's going to say I can sign it.
And pretty much for the October 7th meeting, we want to have a finalized negotiated contract.
I don't think there's any negotiation, Mike. The contract is, is in the bid.
Okay, good.
It's Section 5, and I don't believe there are any changes that really can be made. So where I thought originally we were negotiating something, I don't believe we are.
Well, there's no changes.
Plug the numbers in, all ready for execution.
We put, we actually just, I think what we do is we add their bid right into the book, and that entire book is the contract.
Okay, good, very good. So this would be no, notice of award as a result of the bid process.
And I did make a copy of the notice of award, if you...
Oh, you did?
Want to peruse it. I made enough for the Board.
Oh, you haven't passed it out yet?
No, I didn't.
He's good at Mike.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Does that mean they're going to do Phase 1 and 2?
Oh, good question.
This year?
No, we've set them, they can if they want, and we need to, we can, that's what we want to have the pre-construction meeting with them to figure out what their desire is. It's just that if they can't do all the way through top, we don't want them starting Phase 2 at all. It's either all or nothing on Phase 2.
But that's what I'm trying to say, they're moving all the equipment out there, it'd be smarter to do it all. But the deadline is what, November 15th on paving without the extension on the cold weather? Is it November or December?
December 1st.
Okay.
And the deadline for Phase 1 is November 20th.
So do they know the deadline for December 1st?
It's in the subdivision rules and rights.
Are they aware of it at all?
We, we did not put anything in there regarding that because we basically split it into the two. It may be, we may be better off if they did it as two, but they may want to try to push to do the whole thing. The problem is, is they have to do the whole thing.
That's what I'm trying to get out front from the beginning, so they realize that.
When we have the pre-construction meeting, we would raise that issue of the paving deadline and, and get a feel for where they, what they're going to do.
I can't see them wanting to move their equipment in and out at twice, if they can just punch it all out once.
It's going to come down to the schedule they give us, and then how acceptable the Board finds that schedule.
Yeah, I mean, I've said all along that we'd love them to punch both phases out at once, so if they can do it, I'd be for it.
Yeah, we are for it too, as long as, the worst-case scenario would be to get the binder and the leveling in, the structures raised, and then not having functioning drainage through the entire winter.
But that's up, all right.
No, Ben.
It's also up to Mr. Logan to do his part too, then?
Right.
In between Phase 1 and 2, right?
No, he's before Phase 1.
Oh, he's before Phase 1.
He's as soon as town meeting votes, and that's why we don't want to have him too early, because we don't want the road to be totally ripped up for a month. So it's all part of this, that's why we want to give the notice of award, so we can set up a pre-construction meeting and see what their intentions are.
And Mr. Logan will be part of that.
And Logan would be part of that. So it's all kind of a, at the end, so trying to figure out what's going to actually happen, and we're not sure.
Pretty good news overall, though. Yeah. Great work from the, great work on the Planning Department, though. I know it was a lot of work. We're not done yet.
No, and we're not sure how many roads, we think that this is another company that's going from seal coating into the, they're a big nationwide company, but nationwide, they're more of a seal coating company, that we think, at least up here in the Northeast, they're moving into roadwork. But the thing is, is we don't have the luxury, even if we felt we weren't comfortable with that, we really don't have the luxury. We got a good bid, we got a good price, and we've got a contractor that can do it now.
We haven't, you know what, they're on the pre-qualified list.
They're pre-qualified, and we got GPI, and I'm going to have Jim Neis from GPI out there most of the time, and have Paul administer more from, from in here.
On the memo that Mr. Fellini has put together?
Yes.
Since this is, I would, I'd like to just advise on what I think should be a minor change to your memo, I don't know if we can do this or not, but where you say the bid that was the apparent winner, I would just be a little strong on that and just say they are the winner.
Yeah, well...
Because that, this will end up being a public document, so.
So they were the apparent winner as of now, but as soon as we vote to award the contract, they are the winner?
Correct.
Oh, okay, I agree with that.
Yeah, I couldn't tell them that they are the winner until you...
I agree with that, so leave it as is.
And plus the other issues that we had with the typos, errors.
I agree with that. Take that comment back. Any other comments? Thoughts? Questions? All right. Anybody want to take this motion? Or should I try to lay it out?
I move that we accept the submitted bid from U.S. Pavement Services and award them the successful bid, and direct the Planning Department to send the notice of award.
And final contract pending?
Final contract pending the October 7th town meeting, pending successful approval.
Okay, good. Okay, we have a motion on the table?
Second.
And we have a second. Open for further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All is opposed? Abstained? That motion carries. Again, I don't know if this is on the record or off the record, but excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice work.
Very nice work. Could have easily gone the other direction, of course, but the result was awesome.
I could stop stopping by the office now if I'm notified.
Yep.
All right. Should we do a little bit, and I can do this, should we do a little bit of, do the residents know about the bid process? Has anybody called you, or?
No, they haven't called. I don't believe they have.
John Scanlon did call, I think it was this morning, to ask about the issue, where we stood on the, and I told him that we had a contractor that was interested, and we had some other things to work out, but we'll find out later on today. And we did, so.
Should we call him again and say, let him know the Planning Board?
The potty we have to call is Bill Logan.
Right.
I think that's the potty we have to call.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is...
TV, they couldn't know, are they?
Yeah, I hope, I hope so.
It's not live.
No.
Next item on the agenda is, is this Louise Estates?
Yes.
40B comments to ZBA.
The reason why this is on the agenda is when we do have time to bring these projects to the Board, we try to, many cases, we're kind of last minute making comments on ZBA projects. But recently, if anybody's watched ZBA meeting minutes, there's been some meltdowns of particular members on comments coming out of the Planning Department. So if we're going to go to the effort, I mean, we are a, the Planning Board's a commenting board in the zoning bylaw for all of their permits, and if the Planning Department's going to go through the effort to make the comments, we're trying to, a different tack to actually have it come right from the Board with Mike's signature, that maybe there'll be a different level of understanding or appreciation. So we have a 40B that I have already commented to the state on back in January. This is a project proposed on... This is a project proposed on 4.16 acres of land at the corner of Plymouth and Rocky Meadow Street. The existing, existing conventional zoning would allow two, two houses out there on a subdivision road. There's not enough frontage for two street front lots. So there would be a subdivision road with two lots, and they're proposing 12 lots. We raised a number of concerns in January when we had the site walk with state officials for Mass Housing, and we've attached that to this letter, and we basically took those comments and morphed them into a larger letter. The Mass Housing's eligibility, site eligibility letter that they issued in May basically said that the developer, who's actually a grouping between Bill Logan and Tim Hashem in some type of an LLC, that the developer had to address the concerns that we raised, and that was referenced in the site eligibility letter. The problem is, is I don't, certainly don't see it in the submission that it's any kind of comprehensive traffic analysis or intersection analysis, um, in here, so we're still raising these issues, but, yeah, let me, would you like me to walk through what it says?
Just high level.
Okay. The problem we have is that, um, I think some of you might know that Plymouth Street at Rocky Meadow, Plymouth Street is a road that people drive 45 to 55 miles an hour on. Rocky Meadow Street comes in at a skewed angle.
Yeah.
There's problematic site distance from Rocky Meadow Street on to Plymouth already. This proposed Louise Lane is actually built touching the return radii from Louise Lane actually touches the return on Rocky Meadow. So there's, if you go layout to layout, there is zero separation between the two. So our regulations say that roads should be a minimum of 500 feet apart. Mass DOT standards recommend 350 feet spacing when there are adjacent intersecting streets on the same side. And if they're offset on opposite side, they'll, what a maximum of 150. So keep in mind that this is zero. So we had asked for a comprehensive traffic analysis, and that's what we're, I put in this letter that we should be recommending again. Also, if you remember when we had permitted that make-piece project on the other end of Rocky Meadow where it intersected Wall Street, part of that subdivision process was this board required the developer to reconfigure Wall Street where it came into Rocky Meadow to come in at more of a 90-degree angle, so that the, I think there the spacing was probably about 300 feet, but we still felt it was close. So, um, I know the, the highway superintendent is also gonna make the same comment that if Louise Lane is gonna be permitted there, they should reconstruct the Rocky Meadow Street intersection to bring it in more of a 90-degree angle and extend the distance between these roads as much as possible. So that's the number one comment.
Before you go on to the next one, I just noticed across the street is a no-name cul-de-sac that comes off of Plymouth Street that's probably less than 150.
It's probably a two-lot subdivision, one lot not buildable, so it's functioning as a driveway.
Okay.
So I got one house on it, but we can, we can check that.
I think it has a name on it, and it has a street name, maybe. That's how I noticed it, but I, it didn't look like a street, so.
Yep.
Just something.
Will, can I interrupt you for a second? Is this the entrance to where Loeb's got the pit, taking the gravel?
I don't think so. This is, there's a, there's a, actually an existing house at the site. It's, um, the house on this property is being proposed to be torn down. They haven't taken any gravel out of here, and the rear of, the rear of the cul-de-sac, the site drops right off, so there's no, not really any place to take gravel out of there either, I don't think.
Bring Stevenson back.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
I mean, they're, I'm trying to think when you walk it. Maybe, so is this an old, old gravel area?
No, I might, I might get it confused the other end of, uh, Plymouth Street.
Okay.
From Wall Street.
Yeah, it could be down there. And the number two, I, I think had raised the issue of both horizontal and vertical site distance issues related to Louise Lane, asking them to perform a, a site distance analysis before permitting the project. Number three, it, it, the road, the, the proximity of Rocky Meadow Street is a huge problem, and if they came before this board, I don't think we would permit this, so it's a big problem. But I think a bigger problem is the drainage conditions on the site and the configuration of the abutting properties. The existing drainage patents on the easterly side of the proposed Louise Estates, they appear to flow to the center of the lot and then east to the adjacent Freitas lot. And the sub, the proposed subdivision has groundwater infiltrators all over the place to take care of drainage from the road, but there's nothing that mitigates the drainage from the lots. And there's, on, eat, both sides, there's six lots on each side, draining directly to the abutters unmitigated. So where they are mitigating the 100-year event from the, the street, they, they basically say in their drainage narrative that runoff from the remainder of the site, including the rear yards of the house lots, has not been fully analyzed. But they would, um, given the flexibility to add driveways to the rear of the proposed houses if necessary, the ability to achieve the required discharge rate as well as volume control is presumed. So even though they haven't evaluated it, they haven't designed it, they seem to be pretty aware that they need to do this and are assuming they're gonna have to do it. So comment number four is basically saying, you've really gotta do this because the, on the easterly side, the Freitas property, Paul went out and did a site walk, and it appears that there's, there's an area that extensively floods, and it actually extends up to the house and up to the outbuilding on the property. There's this low depression that collects a lot of water, and we, Paul has seen pictures of that. So, um, there's already a problem there, and this could certainly exacerbate it without appropriate mitigation. What I say at the end of comment number four is that the planning board has done, on a number of subdivisions, we have required roof drain systems for up to the 100-year storm, and that the, uh, planning department can assist the board with wording to make sure that when they design these, that there are test pits being done with percolation rates, that somewhere there's somebody designing the structures. If you remember in the past, they, developers would propose, um, roof drain structures, but there was never a design or perk test. So, I'm, I'm, all the things we've learned the hard way that go wrong with these roof drain systems, at the end of number four, I've listed all those to say that, you know, a recommendation from you that the planning department can assist them on how to work this to make sure that they're putting correctly, and they function, and they do the mitigation that they're purporting to do. So the next one is number five. Also in that low area on the east next to the Freitas property, where their roof, uh, their street infiltrator is proposed to handle the runoff from the road, it's in the low depression that we believe it floods in, on, on the Louise Estates property, a foot and a half or so. So there's a concern that this infiltrator's gonna actually fill in and displace the area that currently retains water on their lot. So that is basically saying that they really should perform a flood storage analysis to see, on the 100-year storm, this whole low area, how much water actually goes there, to make sure they're not displacing floodwater in building this drainage structure. Number six, based on experience now on, I think, donor estates, we're finding that some of the easements we've been putting around these subsurface structures aren't big enough that if you actually had to take a structure out and move it or replace it, there's not enough room to access them. So number six is about that these easements maybe should be enlarged. They, they wanna talk to the DPW. Number seven talks about the west side, which is, um, the Shimkus property, as well as Pike and Chop Shack Cranberries. That the Shimkus property, similarly, um, the drainage goes to that lot. The, the house is not in a hole like the Freitas house and, and outbuilding is, but the same comments we've made on the easterly side relative to Freitas, they need to look at the westerly side also, including adding roof drain infiltrators. Number eight, the road cross-section is 50 feet, but they don't provide a sidewalk, even though there's adequate space. We raised that in the letter to Mass Housing, and they did say that the developers should work with the planning department on that. Number nine, street trees are shown on the detail, however, the spacing is not specified, and they should specify it.
I just wanted to go up. Do you think, uh, I know it's here, say, Chris Ball, but, did they skip the sidewalk intentionally? Or did he just miss it?
They probably skipped it intentionally, but it's 12 lots, you know.
There's probably a good amount of kids that are walking, children.
Yeah. Number 10, the existing homes on both sides of the project are within 5 and 13 feet of the project's property line. I think Freitas is 13 feet off the line, Shimkus is 5 feet. Mitigation of the 40B development through the installation of fencing or arborvitae planting may be appropriate as the high density of 12,000 square foot lots is far above the 80,000 square foot, uh, lots allowed by conventional zoning. So it's a whole different life that these people who thought they were living in a rural residential district now are gonna have. And then 11 is just the catch-all for a whole bunch of other items to be addressed, include but not limited to the adding of road profile and roadway stations, pipe sizing, routing drainage from catch basins to manholes before discharging to the infiltrators, catch basin great capacity, constructability of drainage structures, pipes in the cul-de-sac. If you look on the plan, you've got the cul-de-sac right up against the property line, and we don't even know whether you can actually build that. Spark rates along Plymouth Street at Louise Lane to make sure drainage and grading is correct. Tree location sizes and guying material, and a steel beam guide rail at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
So, I know the, um, so with 40B developments, I know they're always typically a contentious, um, project, let's say, with, um, a lot of local town boards and things like that, especially where they have the density bumps and things like that, um, which, to some extent, the, I guess the part's in section 10. You know what, they're, to some extent, you're stating something that's just part of 40B. You know, a lot of these, a lot of these projects get a lot higher densities than a lot of your local towns, and planning boards, zoning boards, all of them tend to like. But that's kind of, you know what, the nature of the project. And I guess, to some extent, by having that in there, it kind of states a little bit almost that kind of sour grapes as to, yes, I understand our zoning is this, but by the nature of what this type of project is, that's one of the, one of the incentives that the developers get by doing these types of projects. So to some extent, by putting them in there, what are we really stating?
I think what we're trying to do is encourage, is encourage, this letter is not in opposition to this project in any way. It's trying to make the project fit into the location it is. If these abutting houses were 25, 40, 50 feet from their property lines, they're 5 and 13 feet, so it's a, it's trying to encourage the zoning board to maybe trying to smooth that, that out to, to give some mitigation, whether it be through a fence or whatever, to kind of, you know, to, to make it so they both can live in harmony a little bit better.
But isn't, to some extent, that on the owners? So that's really, that's really, those are pre-existing non-conforming lots because of the fact that they're so close within the buffer zones to the edge of their property. They wouldn't be permitted like that now.
Well, our setbacks are 10 feet.
Okay, so they wouldn't be per, okay, so one of them would be permitted, one of them wouldn't be, based off of our existing.
Right.
So, to some extent, you know what, they're in a, a non-conforming type of area right now.
They, they are, but it's just, it's, if you can get these projects to fit in without a lot, if, if you can avoid the contention through, it's just something we've done in projects where, when the planning boards, even though we don't have to do it either with subdivisions, but when there's been that kind of a very close area, and it doesn't happen all that often, but we've tried to keep little tree buffers and whatnot are planted, and the zoning board is good at doing this. So it's just a matter of just saying that we're kind of behind that concept too, that if they can, there's no saying that, you can't really mandate it.
I'm just wondering why, why it's an obligation that we would put on a project whereas it's not really, it's the owner's issues, not the, it was an issue with the existing lots that are there. Even, so say they were doing this as a two-family house, you know what, we could easy, just as easily put those two lots and have them within 10 feet, and they'd only be 15 feet apart. So, I don't know, I just.
I think, I, I'm not sure where you're going with your comment, but number 10 is telling the zoning board to say, pay attention to this, and don't just let them strip the land down. And don't, you know, don't let them not have some, create some kind of buffer and ease it into the community as opposed to blowing up the site and.
There are no trees. This is open field. It's totally open.
Well, even more important than.
There's nothing.
To get some buffer involved. Otherwise, you don't make, I think if you don't make a comment like this, and nobody pays attention to it, it gets built, and the people that, that bought the house, it's only 5 feet off the lot. I mean, like, why didn't somebody think about this? But, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I was just, I was kind of questioning why, why we were putting that in, or why we were commenting on that particular thing. It just seems like, yes, I understand a lot of people don't like the, the density bumps and, what you call it, but that's the nature of.
But we do it in industrial parks. We buffer the yosabutters, even though the industrial park has the right, you know what I mean? That's what our board tends to do in all these projects, is try to get, to facilitate the mutually agreeable that we mitigate this, and, I mean, I, I think that's what we've done on all of them, including all the industrial, the, um, mobile home parks. We've got, we build buffers in. It's, it's just part of, I think, how the board's done everything.
Did you, did you have any other comments? Anything else? Any comments? Questions? Thoughts? Pretty good letter?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, not hearing any of the comments. Chair entertained a motion to approve the letter dated September 24th to the zoning board of appeals for, um, is it Louise Estates? Formerly Robert Estates, Plymouth and Rocky Meadow Streets in Middleborough. This letter's going to Chairman Atwood from the planning, the, um, Middleborough Planning Board chair.
For the board. It, I wrote it says, says for the board. That means the board voted for you to do it.
Oh, yeah, you did that. For the board, for the Middleborough Planning Board. So that is the entertained motion.
So moved?
We have a motion on the table?
A second?
And a second, and it's open for further discussion.
Okay. The only thing I would say is developers do use, so that they don't have to build subdivision. Okay, the only thing I would say is developers do use, so that they don't have to build subdivision. I just want to put it out there.
Did you get that?
The building for 40B housing project, it throws out our zoning, therefore they, developers do this instead of building a subdivision because they couldn't get the standard C on a legal subdivision.
Okay.
But it's, to some extent, the intent is to entice developers to do these projects because they get the density bumps and they get.
It's cheaper for them to do these than it is a regular subdivision. That's the bottom line under my discussions.
Any other comments? Still open for discussion. And hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries.
I just want the public to realize that.
What's that?
I just want the public to realize that, that it's the developers.
Good point.
Are doing these because they want to save money.
All right, I think we have one more item on the agenda and that is 88 River Street, A-plus Waste and Recycling. Final comments to the ZBA.
Mr. Chairman, before you take this, this is one that I've recused myself from, so I'd like to leave, but I, I just want to note one thing in the packet that's not on the agenda, but we should, we need to think about it.
Oh, yes.
Which is the CPC representative. So it doesn't have, we, we can put it on the agenda for another evening.
No, we can do it tonight.
To appoint somebody to represent the board and take David Madigan's place on the.
Anybody want to volunteer? Any volunteers? Everybody, everybody who doesn't want to do it, step back. Come on, I'm, I'm, I'm definitely not in a position to do it. My schedule is stretched as it is.
And that's, that's the issue for me.
I think that we should appoint our associate member.
Since he's not here.
I think it's an arsenal here.
Can you just put that on the agenda, Paul, for the next meeting? Doesn't appear that we have any volunteers. But please let whoever asked the question know that.
You got to put it on the 15th because you didn't want to do anything on the meeting of the first.
Yeah, but that's changed now.
Okay. Yes.
Do I say something?
No.
It's going to change a little bit. I don't think they're going to show up.
You want to do that CPC on the first or the 15th?
First. Okay, so the next one is, so you're going to, you're.
I'm accusing myself because I formerly owned property out on River Street.
Next item on the agenda is the 88 River Street, A-plus Waste Recycling, final comments to the ZBA. Mr. Fellini?
Thank you.
Can you give us high level, please?
Yes, I had the pleasure of reviewing this project. It is A-plus Waste and Recycling. They do a single stream recycling of compost and, and bottles and things like that, that's proposed. I had 13 issues that I started letting the ZBA know about in May of, May 9th, 2013. Then again on the 13th, June 13th, and again on August 20th. And apparently this was the thing that they had a meltdown on and they thought I was submitting it at the last minute on August 20th before their meeting. However, I had previously had concerns in this way back in May. These items range from operational capacity all the way to control of vomits on, on site and things like that. You want to go through item, line item?
Can you start out, go by, go by real quick until somebody stops you?
Okay. Originally, they had a noise odor and traffic concerns that were addressed, but they didn't address them in their entirety and the other 10 items weren't even, barely were scratched the surface of addressing.
Excuse me, Paul.
Sure.
What, what exactly do they do? You say they.
They have piles of compost, you ever, you know, where you get your mulch and things like that or peat. They turn huge piles of leaves and compost material like that and reduce it down to a compost that you can use for the garden. So the problems with that though is they have, it releases aerosols into the air and things like that, but it also leach, there's a lot of leachate coming from it because it's all tannins going into.
Right, so it's like a big pile of this compost, they just kind of turn it over.
Yeah, a lot of times the DPW would have a yard in the back somewhere and they would request that people dump their leaves and they would be turning it over for five years and creating compost.
Okay, thank you.
They also have recycle center there. Essentially they're, they receive bottles and they compress them and, and then they send them back out.
Just, there's a quick question. Is this not similar to a facility that they have right off of Route 18 over in Bridgewater?
I don't know.
And there's actually, I think, another one right in the center of, like off of Elm Street in Foxborough, run by the, specifically run by the DPW.
Yeah, yeah. That I, I can't answer to that because I don't know those facilities that you're referencing. But this facility, they, under item one for occupational, operational capacity, most of it appears to be addressed, however, the maximum quantities per day, per month, specific waste to be composting, step-by-step handling methods for composting and recyclables don't appear to be fully addressed. I have three items, the special, that I was recommending, that the special permit should specify sludge waste for composting should not be permitted. That's not even, that could be a possibility, that they could use that. And as you know, that has other issues. Then item B, the maximum operation capacity should be determined. And C, the facility should be reevaluated every year for compliance. A lot of times these facilities start to exceed their capacity or exceed their permits and you wouldn't know unless you review it. They did a, a traffic study and that appears to be addressed and Weston and Sampson reviewed that. The noise study and mitigation, I had concerns with this. They were, they were comparing their noise study to the existing unpermitted activities that are out on the site now, which they're doing composting and recycling and producing noise issues there. So they're comparing it to an existing non-conforming activity instead of comparing it to a residential facility. And I know you and I had a discussion about that.
You said existing non-conforming, so isn't it an existing non-permitted, not an existing non-conforming?
It's a non-permitted activity. The activity that was there originally, the brick factory was expired 20 years ago. So this was a, a new activity on a site and, and they don't, they're not providing any noise buffering or, you know, tree buffering. They, they are providing some tree buffering, but not to the standards of the zoning bylaws. So they, they require to provide 150 feet of, of buffering. They're only providing like 15 feet, a single row of, you know, a single row of trees and things like that. So, item B, this study does, it doesn't address the impact of noise on the wildlife. I'm not sure if conservation is going to address that. At this time, it hasn't been addressed. Also too, there is a concern that it doesn't appear that they consider the condition of River Street, which is rutted out and degrading. When you have empty 18-wheelers or 10-wheelers driving on top of that, you have impact noises coming from the frame and the bed itself impacting itself as they move down the road. The noise analysis doesn't appear to have incorporated that issue into their decibel count. So that was an issue there. And as a note, the house at 84, which is at the corner of Auburn Street and River Street, that's only 20 feet from the street.
Do you think those residents have been notified of it?
Yes, they have, an attorney, Attorney Manujian?
Yeah.
Has been handling that with them and see what that, where that goes. Odor issues, the health department produced a letter that addressed the odor concerns. Health study on the compost, that, that again was the health department letter, I didn't go into detail on that. The buffering, we described that and that it wasn't meeting zoning, but apparently the ZBA already approved their plans, so that's kind of a moot point, but it is an issue that we didn't agree with. Drainage study, there hasn't been a drainage study produced until now and the ZBA is planning on issuing a decision of approval on this. I recommend at the end of this letter that they wait until CONCON goes through it. Groundwater study, there hasn't been a groundwater study and they didn't locate any of the wells in the adjacent vicinity. So that was an issue. The facility discharge from the truck washing and unclean recycled materials. We recommended that they had a truck washing facility, they would need a tight tank and things like that. The requi, in their draft decision, they're allowing that they can do it, I believe, inside the building until they can get a tight tank and I disagree with that. I mean, if you, if you discharge, the, the buildings are open essentially, they're more of just canopies. And if you're wetting down the trucks in the inside, the leachate's still going into the ground and finding its way to the resource areas. We should be cognizant that we have the Taunton River and the, and the, and all this, all this discharge and leachate ends up in the Taunton River. There's wetlands within, not too far away from the compost piles and all this activity. So, hope, so conservation's reviewing the impact on the environment, on the environment in regards to that hopefully. There was no, they did not address the safety and security provisions for the facility. I, I don't see any fencing or anything to that effect proposed. And I'm not sure if they've addressed all the issues regarding the nuisance vomits that could be attracted to a facility like this. The health department produced a letter, but I don't see any real comments.
Okay, what do you want the board to do with this? Because you've already.
This is just a, I was going to have you sign it, but I ended up signing it and I wasn't sure. It was for your knowledge that these were the issues that we had.
What exactly was their meltdown about?
Well, the issue was.
Quote-unquote meltdown?
The, well, no, it was a, it was a, I'm told it was a substantial meltdown. Apparently, when I submitted the August 20th, 2013 letter, one of the members said that, why are we submitting it at the last minute and why didn't we hear these issues before? And why are they telling us now and we can't do anything? And they just wanted to show that there was, this is our fourth reiteration of the same concerns.
Let me know if you need anything, I need any back.
Just a question on, I know you addressed based off of the EIA, the EIA report. Were any other similar facilities? Like I said, I mentioned a couple of facilities that seem to be along the same. And I've pursued them, I've walked by them and some of the things that you, you brought up as to like, things like security fencing and provisions. And it seems to be based on similar facilities, the same types of conditions. So did we compare this project just versus our own? Did we do a similar comparison versus similar projects in other areas? And find out if they're having some of these concerns that we, are they actual issues with other projects or?
These are typical things that, from my experience, as you know, I've been, in the engineering field, we're 20 something years. We've worked on landfill areas in Hanover, that's a recycle center, as well as other areas in Marshfield and so forth and so on. So I'm, I'm familiar with what should be addressed and the different issues in regards to the leachate and things. These are standard things that should be at least addressed or looked at by a environmental specialist. At a certain, not just a cursory, but a little bit more than that, to see if it is an issue. Some of these issues they didn't even reveal, so.
I just, I've, I've seen similar facilities and things like that where they have the big, they're actually open to the public to be able to, like, as you suggested, bring their, bring their mulch, bring their leaves and that type of stuff.
Because if you don't, if you don't provide security for the facility and you have equipment and possible dangerous stuff, not necessarily chemicals, but dangerous situations with steep slopes of the piles and what have, you're going to have children playing over there. And also too, you're going to have animals going in and out of the place and causing problems as well. So you need some type of fencing or some type of security to prevent, prevent that from occurring.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I hope I answered your question.
I don't see anything else on the agenda.
Well, let me just thumb through it because I found this, the CPC I found in there. There was just the information on Oak Point, which was the construction weekly reports. I didn't think you had any comments on that.
We will not be discussing Oak Point tonight.
And also with Robert Estates, which is Louise. And that should do it. And no more questions about the Fernway. And that, that should do it.
Any ideas, member they're looking for to join this group that Mr. Madigan was on? Is that a once a month thing or?
I thought it was once a month. I don't believe it's weekly. I think they meet once a month and, and that would vote it.
Could we maybe find out some more information for the next meeting? What the.
That's a good point.
What the obligation may be so that members can better make a decision?
All right.
Yeah, like I said, once a month thing, that's a little less pressure.
Dan, can associate member.
And how about a secretary, isn't a secretary good? Okay, here we know all the discussions, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion on the table?
Aye.
And a second, open for further discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.